Shall we make a start? So, welcome everybody to the Second Children and Young People's Committee of our new system. My name is Christine Townsend, I am one of the ward councillors for South of London, so the Chair. We're going to go around and introduce ourselves.
I'm Katia Hantjen, councillor Katia Hantjen, and I'm the councillor for this meeting in East and was the Vice-Chair.
And councillor Cam Hayward, councillor for North.
Councillor Andy Freeman, councillor for Birmingham.
Councillor Cara Ravan, councillor for Central Central, substitute for show.
Henry Michelle, councillor for State Michelle.
Sarah Plasick, councillor for Hengford, for Cheshad Park.
Kerry Mills, Hertfordshire.
And our officers.
I think I'm the Director of Education and Skills.
Hello, Gayle Rogers, I'm the Head of Children's Commissioning.
Hi, Kate, the Director of Children's Practice.
Jane Watson, Labour Party.
And I'm Helen House, Director of Children's Services.
And also my members we have.
Hello, I'm Jo Mans, I'm the Coordinator for this Policy Committee. And, do you want to say?
Hi, Amy Wardwell, Policy Committee Officer, I'm just doing these slides today.
Amy, also from the Policy Committee.
And Susan, don't introduce us. Hi, give you a couple of seconds. So there's one substitute today. Councillor Jeffrey Sides to attend, so councillor Cara. Levane? Levane is substituting, and I understand you need to leave a bit earlier? Okay, no worries, then just, just leave whenever you feel you need to, that's fine, thank you. We are not expecting any fire drills during the course of this meeting, so if there is one, it means that it's real. And we need to be exiting at the main entrance, which is probably where most of us came in, and then the gathering places by the cathedral. Item two is the apologies and substitutions which I've just run through. Declarations of interest, so this is for any councillors that feel they need to make any declarations at this moment, given what's on the agenda. Okay, that's a no. And let me move on to item four, which are the minutes from the last meeting, or our first meeting, and these are held on the 27th of June. And I would say that they were a correct record, I need to second up for, to say that they feel that the minutes are a correct record.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Is committee content to accept them this? Yeah, or not, okay, thank you very much. And then we move on to item five, which is Chairs' announcements. I was hoping that we might have something from national government to announce, but I don't really think we were at that place yet. Possibly the next time we meet, we might have something that will be substantial and relate to the state sector, but we're not at that place yet. So that takes us on to public forum, item number six, we have 30 minutes for this, if you need it. And so we have three people that have submitted questions. So let's go with the first person on the list, which is Sally Kent. Sally's not here. We don't think Catherine is either. However, Jen Smith is here, Jen, did you want to ask your questions? Or did you want to, I don't know, I mean it's up to you, you can ask a question, and then you've got the answer for it, and then have your follow-up?
It's fine, I'm happy with the response that I got on that, I don't have follow-up.
Oh, okay. Is that the same as the second question as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then we have one public forum statement, which is from Jen. We've all seen the statement, did you want to read it out, Jen?
No, I don't want to read it out, but I just wanted to say really that's the edited highlights of my last 10 years living in St Jude's. So, I mean if you think that's bad, that's bad, the actual truth of the matter is, it's so much worse. And I have serious concerns about whether children who grow up witnessing just these extreme levels of violence, because it definitely affects the kind of person who are. It affected me as a person, I've worked in St Jude's now, I just feel angry and sort of confrontational, because it's kind of a bit like, it turned into a U and M situation. And, you know, as a parent, just trying to go to the supermarket, having to work out if this, this person, this drug dealer who's kicking off in front of you is going to stab you or your friend, and you have to think, how can I take this man down here on my own with nothing but a camping washing line, that's the kind of situation it is. It's just, it's incredibly toxic, and it's just, it's so bad, it's really bad.
Yeah, thank you, Jen. When this statement came in, there were those that would have, would have possibly sent it back for moderation, or even refused it. However, I've accepted it as it is. This is somebody's lived experience, and I think it's really important that we understand fully the impact on children and young people, because Wade Street is a residential area, there is a high number of families and individuals living there that are not only social renting sort of housing providers, we also have, there are also some of our own tenants that are living in and around this area. And I looked at some of the data for Wade Street, and the safety levels in Wade Street are, one of the postcode's is in the top 1% for danger in the country, and the other two postcode's are in the top, are in the top 2% as in relation to unsafe in and around the streets. By comparison, Stinkton Road is 3%, and East Street is, was 4%, which was my local East Street, because that's my ward. So it's clearly one of the most dangerous streets in the entirety of the country. And the impact of growing up in and around that on young people and children was evident both from Jen's statement, but also I think it's really important that we start to recognise and see that there are areas within our city where our children and young people really do need support from the multi-a, in that multi-a fifty space, because there was a lot of A to Cs and sort of organisations that were being included in the statement, but that's a reflection of the sort of, you know, the nature of the work that needs to be done really, within and around those sorts of areas. Okay, thank you very much. So that brings us to the end of public forum, and it takes us on to item number seven. So what I wanted to say about item number seven, this was the sort of the monitoring report, if you like, that we didn't get in the first one, we said that we wanted it. And so what we have here is some narrative about the sorts of work at the sort of headline level that's going on, the bigger projects, but also that monitoring data, and then also some narrative on what's coming up, if you like. So Hannah's going to do that in a moment with us, and I think it's important that we remember that this was a recommendation that came from People's scrutiny in our previous iteration of this council, so we're following through on that. If there's anything in the monitoring data that you feel is missing, then this isn't a static document, this is going to be something that we'll have in this position each time we meet together. And so if there's other information that you feel should be added or needs to be added, then please do let us know, and if possible, we will include it. There may be times when there's data we can't include, because we're talking about actual children, and it might not be possible to include it. However, if we're at all we can, and it's something that we feel that we want to have in the public domain, then we ask the officers that that data is collected. Okay, so Hannah and I, we'll take this to her.
Brilliant, thank you. So I wanted to start by saying this is the sort of first time we've done it in this format, we've shared this sort of information in quite, in the way that we are, as soon as we've got it, and as sort of, and as fully as we can. But yeah, as you said, if there's suggestions or questions about other data that anybody would wish to see and we have it, then we will include it. And with that, as we develop the format, it might change in terms of how we set out the data for again, and for questions and suggestions on that. So I suppose in that, in that spirit, the update this time, what we've done is we've gone through things in the preoccupying service, what we're worrying about, things that we're able to celebrate, as well as things that are on our horizon for next time. So quite a lot that does speak to the agenda that will then follow sufficiency, for example, and future agendas for this committee coming up. So just to start off, and you've got the paper, I won't go in massive detail. The Children's Policy Improvement Board is, was put in, in May as an improvement board, which is very common practice across children's services, willing to support our focus around improvement, of course all children's services and social care as well as SEM and education. And we've got an external chair, which again is quite common practice. I'm delighted that Steve Crocker is the Chair, and obviously includes the lead member as well as the Chief Executive. And so that's where our data is coming from, as it goes through that board, it needs monthly, so I'm pleased that we've got it there in place in the stands, and we'll do inspections as they come, because we'll have that data available. And we did celebrate a inspection, successful, a lot of inspection in our skills and life form, employment skills and life learning service, it was really good to have goods throughout that inspection, without spending for behaviours and attitudes. And which, and obviously the scope of that service covers further education skills as well as community learning and apprenticeship. So it's really good, I think, to celebrate the work that we've got there in Bristol, and lovely to see that written up by Officer. I think it's fair to say that, A, if not the biggest challenge for us all, Bristol continues to be provisioned for children's education in disabilities, and we will continue to talk through the autumn and into next year, it's about work for it. We are doing that, as we did do last time as well. We are bringing our news and strategy, which has been produced with children and families to this committee, to be formally approved in January, and we're beginning our consultation in October. And we are doing another bit of work across the city, including developing a talent support fund for schools, outreach service to the schools. We really need an increase in this for the city. Okay, schools, we know that that's something that schools really want, it's something we really want, we need to work together. And to be able to do that, we know, we know we've got a lot of work to do, and I know we've had this subject discussion at this committee previously. And we'll see in the data, increasing demand for EHP plans and education care and health plans, which has accelerated and escalated in the last five months in common with the rest of the country. We've got a number of, we've got a lot of requests for assessment, and as a result, time limit has slowed down, and again, has a much of a public record setting up data for you to see here, and we will continue to do so. One of the big bits of work that we're doing, and really wanting to sort of continue to accelerate, is the capital programme, which James will talk to later on, on the agenda around special education, specialist provision across the city. Key stage two data, and indeed actually DCC data, obviously, we've had data across the summer. Key stage two data, I'm reporting on here, I'm happy to bring secondary data as well. We've got significant challenges, but again, that won't be a surprise to anyone. Significant gaps remain, we will accomplish this, shorten parts of the national process, and particularly the children living in poverty, as well as children with SEM. And so we're working on primary schools, across all types of primary schools, to focus on improvement and achievement of key stage two. And we are doing some work on places planning, so again, we will bring future reports on the provision of places. There's a demographic decline nationally in early years children, and as a result, we will see the number of primary pupil places decline in Bristol over the next few years, and we need to plan for that, and we need to do it together, so that we don't see sort of incremental reductions in every school. So we are again working closely with schools to start to map that out in Bristol. Just to follow the statement that was made, really conscious of the early violence continuing to be a really serious topic for, for the city, and we received an update on the sponsor's serious youth violence at our office this month. And I won't go through the report here, but just to say, we've been doing some work particularly around the government's known site of serious youth violence, establishing a preventive serious violence board, working with partners. And again, we will bring an update to this committee in October. We're also starting work on the serious youth, child safeguarding practice reviews as a result of the serious youth violence that took place in February, March, and that will be working the next few months. Recruitment potential, social workers continues to be a huge area of focus. I don't have a social worker today, and obviously they do really well, we continue to focus hard on how can we attract and recruit and obtain by social workers into Bristol, and to continue to keep the work, and a number of its works is out here, including an improved parent reward package for social workers, children and adults, and the introduction of a systemic practice hub, as well as recruiting social workers who qualify to always part of the national scheme. And then lastly, on keeping children safe, we've been doing quite long work around the no recourse to public funds inside of social work team to make sure that we're supporting families who arrive in Bristol with no recourse to public funds, but doing that in a suits for children in particular, and will continue to be monitored by the working and the work that we do together with our colleagues in adults. And then children in care, so we brought a triple preparing strategy to full council in July, that will continue to report here. And we also have the sufficiency strategy, which I won't say much about, because Gail will talk about that later on in the agenda today. You can see the data in front of you, Vic will talk in a little while about attendance, which is, which is set out there. I mean, you can, we've tried to sort of make it clear where the data, if it goes up or down, whether that's, you know, good news or not good news. So we're trying to make that clear, but again, any suggestions welcome. And where we can, comparing ourselves to national averages, and we'll continue to try and do that, we might be trying to do that in comparison to other core cities as we develop this. And then the last thing to say going forward, we've got attendance, a real focus on attendance coming up. As we go into the autumn term, Vic will speak to that. Really welcome everyone's efforts to focus particularly on supporting children to attend schools as much as possible. We've got inspection activities, we've got adult services as well as youth justice. And we expect to be assessed on our progress against our SEN accelerated progress pouch, Bristol Parent Care Forum and the Health Partners Company are a part of. And we've been doing some work on our early health, which is early health and early intervention prevention.
So can I just, I'm looking at the monitoring now, I just want to clarify that we understand what's going on, the arrows on the right. So we've got green arrows, red arrows, and then there's some that are black, and they're going in, some are going up, some are going down, so. So if we just go through a couple of lines, to see if we understand what's going on. So I'm looking at the top page four, percentage of 17 and 18-year-olds that are not in education, employment or training. So we've got the percentage, 5.8% of that age group would be considered to be in that group. That's 0.2%, all right, yeah, 0.2% lower than it was. If I'm wrong, you need to correct it, isn't it? We've got the national comparison, is that what the 5% is? Yeah. And then 5.2 is...
Going to target.
Ah, right, okay, yes, sorry. So the top, so what we're looking to get it to is 5%, the average sort of national comparator is 5.2. So it's green, then it's, because it's going down, and therefore green is good, red is not so good, but it's just whether we're going up or down with the numbers. And so if we look at percentage of children in care and full-time education, 87.4%, that's down 1.3 percentage points. So therefore it's gone down and it's red, because actually what we want is green, the other way, that makes sense. What does the black arrow, what's the black arrow in?
That's where we are making the judgment.
Okay.
So, the obvious, the obvious one is number of children in care at the bottom now, is we're not, you know, you've actually got a slight rise there in terms of number of children in care, that's not necessarily, we're all about things just now.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, open for comments or questions, so Katia and then Sarah. Okay, we'll take it from there.
On the top of this particular document, it says, let us start in May 2024, does that mean it's the whole year from May 2023 to May 2024?
Not necessarily, no.
Because that could make a difference on some of them, because our children really want the thing of the school calendar. So stuff that happens in August is probably all happening in some things and less in other.
Yeah, and that's where I think this develops. Yeah, as you say, it's things I've seen in a pattern, no, it's, it's the data, it's the data that we have in May. Taken, it's taken as a snapshot in May, so in October we'll bring the data from September, I guess. Some of these will move up, because it's the beginning of the year.
As Bill said, last year, education and training, they could get better throughout the year, because maybe each school has nothing to do, and then they might find something.
So what we could do, I mean, it depends how long, what we want, but what we could do is show the trends of the year, and we can just do that. And we can show, in fact, the team did present, to be fair to the stats we're up here, they did present some slides with this, which shows the process of time, so we can bring something up.
Maybe not in this full report, I don't know whether it will be in the report. If we do have that sort of as a little snapshot every now and then of something, because that would help. Because we were speculating with the children going, going to care, I don't know if this is true, more during school or at summer school holidays, if there's more child protection issues during the summer holidays, I mean, we're just speculating, I don't know if that's the case.
Yeah, and I, so I noticed you talked about the equip board, and that looks really, really great. I just wanted to ask, are there, are there sort of minutes or something like that that are able to be circulated around to the rest of the committee? Because obviously, you know, it's, seems like a really good sort of multi-agency working on it, but it would be good for us as a committee to understand what's sort of talked about, and also, you know, be able to potentially figure in through, receive if appropriate. Because it looks like that meets more frequently than this committee, so it would be quite good to sort of have an understanding in between these committees of what is actually being talked about, and what works coming out of that. So that was just my note on that, and then obviously, you know, I know that at a future committee, we are, you know, sort of the SEM deals and all that, but the stats on the, the former snapshot, and the EHP finalisations is really quite worrying. I mean, a colleague sent me some case work today, because she knew I was coming today, about, you know, one of her residents who has been waiting, it looks like it's been ongoing, it's been two years, waiting for sort of placements and things like that, and EHP revisions for their child, and it's looking like there might be issues with them even starting school in six days, and the term has felt again, so, you know, it's leading into our attendance issues. So yeah, that was just, that's that.
Can you talk about it a bit?
Okay, so yeah, I can certainly take that away, I mean, we're happy to consider whether you come what, we still want to, I suppose we want to have a really, we want the team to be really sort of full and, and, and open in terms of any concerns that go on, and there wouldn't be any concerns, but we just want to set the context for that. So let me take it away, and work out how well we can make sure that you're as close to that as we possibly can with this thing. And as I say, what we're trying to do is bring the data we bring there here, is so that there is a direct, that kind of.
Yeah, I have no objection to you, committee members seeing, basically why I see, I suppose, is kind of a way to put it. What I have also done is raised with the Deputy Leader, Councillor Mack, whether all of the committee, what, because at the moment, what we have is, there are a number of meetings leading up to these committee meetings, the council comes to some of them, and then we have the leaders meeting. But actually, I personally don't have objection to members of our committee joining those, those pre-meetings. And the reason for that is because we are like the Horizon standards, if you like. We have all the political parties that are represented, so you're, the other elected members that members of your party are feeding in from different parts of the city. And we can't see everything all at, all at the time, all at the same time. And actually, I think what we need particularly in this area, and I'm sure that every committee chair would say that about that area, but particularly this one, is to really keep an eye on what's going on, so that we are able to know what's going on in the far reaches of the north of Filling, and the far reaches of the east of our city, and see, see, see that across the board. So what Councillor Mack is doing, basically, she's kind of doing a little all day, I think, at the moment, about how committee chairs feel, how the vice chair feel. I have no objection at all to other committee members joining, because I, my view is, the more we all understand and know what's going on, I think only thanks for better governments, to be honest, and better decision-making. Because at the moment, it's like, these papers come out, and unless you're myself or Katja, it's the first time that you see them. And actually, there's been quite a lot of work going into it when you come up, and so, and there may well be things that you're aware of as board members or other party members, that we're just not. So that's, that is something that I've kind of, I've raised, so we'll see where that goes really, there might be constitutional reasons or whatever, I don't know, but maybe we have to look at the constitution when that comes back around, and we have to put something in the review there. If it's not working in the way that we necessarily wanted it to be, or expected it to, or expected it to. What I would say about the length of EHP, particularly the assessments, when, what was reported kind of under people, under people's scrutiny really, was the average weight. And whilst the average weight obviously is important, and it gives us a good view, actually what we're mostly going to be interested in, the ones that are really, that are taking what seems to be forever to get assessed. And it, I mean, I don't know, I've not asked, but because we've asked officers to kind of look at those ones that are taking a long, long time, they're taking a long time, because presumably they're the more complex ones. And we could just do the easier ones, if you like, and get our 20 weeks up. But actually, who is that really benefiting? And it's those children and families that have been waiting longer, need the results so that they can get those assessments through, they can get those plans in place, and then move on to specialists, if that's what they need, or whatever that particular school is for those families. So yes, I understand that we're saying, but maybe what we need on here then is maybe the average weight time at that particular moment, but then also reassurance is that there's nothing that's going on in 52 weeks, and then what is actually, you know, at this point in time, what is the kind of the longest outstanding assessment, for example, so that we've got, okay, it's, I don't know, 54 weeks or something, 52 weeks, okay. The next time hopefully it would be less than that, because we've got rid of that, that one's been done, more of it now, maybe now it's, I don't know, 46 or something like that. So that we can monitor and hopefully influence and direct results, because the families that are waiting longer, obviously, that's, it's, those are the ones that are, they're up in the average, but it's also about the, the experience of that child and that family having. Katia?
I just wanted to know, and then that also has an implication of what time of the year it is, I don't know if the EHP's coming, we're setting the time of the year, and imagine if it begins in September.
I mean, that's what I was going to say, and I think you, thank you, because I think you're right. It's, I'm sure that this thing has talked through that. I think the, it does, it's one that does peak, and certainly as we come up to six, September transfer, as we say, that's where the demand is highest in the June trial. And certainly as we come up to six, uh, September transfer, as we said, that's where the demand is highest in the June, July. That's not to say we shouldn't be able to come up with, we should. Um, but it will be one of the reasons why we've got additional pressure. Cam and then.
So yeah, I was, I was just gonna ask, I have a question, just numbers, make sure it's correct. Uh, I think what you said about the, my, my explanation of this, the number percentage of parents, I was going to tell you, it's a minute twelve percent, down thirty percent. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is, that was our last, um, reported point, that it goes up and I think the last time we reported it. So we did this quarterly and a lot of the directors have published national wikis, I think. The last time we published it was at the end of the winter term. Um, and therefore it was much higher. Um, but we also have the additional demand coming through which is having an impact. And obviously we're working to bring that up as, you know, as much as we can.
My question was really, we're talking about, um, summer, um, and different times of the year. But is there also a, a, that transfer from primary to secondary? Because obviously there's likely to be more supply or need in, in primary than, than you would get in secondary. So is there that kind of, you know, difficulty of moving off from primary into secondary with terms of provision?
Yeah, so I think we, so nationally, not, not just Bristol, do tend to see as children change key stage, particularly as demands of the curriculum increase over time, uh, that can often then provide opportunities for the, you know, where senders are assessing children, getting a sense of where they are and what support they might be in that sometimes they're listening to education, health and care planning. Um, I think also that, as you'll be aware, that shift from primary education to secondary is significant in terms of secondary education is a bit more self-led in terms of, otherwise primary still has a kind of, you know, project based type of curriculum. So, um, that can be why we see a large number of assessments during year six, thinking about those children moving into year seven. Um, and then, and then likewise, that's the seasonality point in terms of the summer term becomes a very busy term for us in terms of, um, you know, that period between Easter and we'll possibly start in February, kind of after to the end of the academic year. And an increase in assessments coming through at that point as senders and parent teachers are thinking about those children transitioning forward. So we've had a very busy period just come through. Uh, it's, it's more like you're setting.
Cam, one of the chief. You're out of my eyesight, sorry.
Two questions. Um, uh, the number of children electively in the T E A is gone down, but is that because they're back in school? Or because they're, they've got older and they're no longer eligible for school? And the number of contacts to first response, is that self referrals or is it professionals referring people to social services or people, numbers of the community? And are the, the number of malicious referrals increased within that number?
So why don't we begin to take that out and then come back to you?
Yeah, that, that data is, is every contact into first assessment. So that could be self referral, professionals, numbers of the community, anybody. So it's any contact that, that we receive is, is what's counted here. And that is irrespective of what action we take or if there's no further action that we take, um, depending on the level of point and what we assess as. So is that proof for just problems worse than it is? So could we operate down of all of it, if we could, if we could look at that one specifically, that would be more helpful. Okay. We have that data.
I think on the, um, on the first point around, um, primary education, there'll be a mix of, of both some children who tend back to education. And this would take an amazing, it would, it would be few that would have been, uh, kind of aging out of that kind of sixteen space. And so I don't think that break down of that twenty six, but I would check that after the meeting if that's helpful.
And Ellie?
Um, just want to, wow, two things really. One, I, as a parent, look over that S E N trial, I've had the H C P. So for, for people watching this committee, there are some who saw this committee that've got that experience, which I think is really helpful to fifty two weeks, by the way. Um, and I just want, also wanted to say, it's really helpful to have this data and having this laid out, this report. Because I think city run committees like this, where there is so much we've got to get our heads around, um, especially as new councillors, the sort of responsibility that, that comes with that and the, the decision making that will, in its day, we're not making big weighty decisions, but there will be further dialogue track, which is really useful having this contact. So I just wanted to say we really appreciate that and thank you for the work that's gone into it. And then we'll, we'll go into future ones.
Okay, thank you. So on that note then, um, I'm just looking to see what it is that we are, so are we, so basically we're noting the content of the report. Um, and thanking, uh, just for putting it together, um, and as long ago as ten minutes, um, in front of what the aggregate timescale is, so that's good. Um, so this agenda item is about increasing, um, school attendance. And this is, it provides some key, um, information about the challenges around attendance, um, the risks, um, areas of progress and the updates. This is for us to note. Um, I've got it down with Sue Coombs doing this one, presumably back home. So Vic is going to present this, uh, report to us and then we'll come back to questions or comments afterwards. Thank you, Otis.
Thank you. Um, so to introduce, uh, this report, so first and foremost, uh, schools must be a place of belonging, uh, learning in community for every child. And we know from research that a good education is a key driver of social mobility. Um, statistically, a child missing, uh, a day of education is about zero point five of their educational career. So as that accumulates, um, you get a sense of the amount of lost education that they are experiencing. But we also know, uh, that high attendance is a good contributor of good outcomes for children in terms of their attainment, um, as well. Uh, as well as keeping, uh, children safe, because schools are, uh, safer places in terms of, uh, safety arrangements. But also where children can make friendships and create strong social relationships as well into independence. Uh, national average attendance at secondary schools before Covid, uh, was around ninety four percent. And there's been a trend nationally of some variation from that. And there's lots of, uh, press nationally around uh, the drop in attendance since the pandemic. At Bristol, we are presently eighty seven percent, uh, attendance on average at secondary school, uh, which continues to be a concern. Um, and does mean that a large number of children are missing, missing significant portions of school, uh, which is, is having an adverse effect on their outcomes, but also their visibility. Uh, so the report covers the latest attendance data that we have. Uh, there is a new statutory responsibility for schools and all schools nationally to share attendance information with local authorities. So we now have, uh, more data coming through than we would have in previous years as well. And that's been a positive intervention. Uh, but attendance continues to be a challenge both nationally and locally. And rates nationally have not recovered to pre-pandemic levels, um, as well. So if I just go through in terms of data. So our attendance rate is below national in all phases, but particularly, uh, in special schools as well. So there's more to do in terms of our relationship with schools to look at the causes of that. Um, but also attendance of some of our vulnerable groups and priority groups, as was identified in the previous report as well. Um, so in terms of the work that we are doing, uh, to support our schools. So, uh, we've been working with the far reach patient, uh, attendance advisor, uh, which is, uh, a number of these working with local authorities nationally, uh, to produce a self-assessment, um, of, of where we are in terms of our attendance policies and thinking about our interventions and support offered to schools. Uh, we're also redesigning the service, uh, to, to coordinate more with the new guidance, uh, in terms of having a work relation with schools as well. Uh, we'll be launching a citywide press campaign aimed at promoting good attendance, uh, which will be called at the moment a national name, but attendance will be there as title for your future. Uh, that's being, uh, developed collaboratively with our schools, uh, trust and the target will be, uh, to support children, young people, but also parents in care as well as part of the campaign. Uh, we will also, alongside this, be setting up an inclusion board, uh, which will be chaired by myself as director of education to oversee, uh, the data and the practice model in terms of how we are working with schools, uh, to target interventions, uh, in particular priority groups where we're seeing high rates of either low attendance, but also children missing out on education as well. Uh, we are exploring, uh, the development of an inclusion index. Uh, so looking at data points that we hold, but also more properly data that's able to us, um, uh, to inform how we are working with our schools and how schools are supporting their communities. And then we are also investing resources to improve, uh, the quality of data reporting in light of that new statutory duty. Um, in order to be able to, uh, support interventions as well. Um, I think the, the report covers the specific data that's in, um, uh, we prepared to work with kind of each graph. And I'm happy to come back to the chair and take questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, so are there any questions, um, about this report for Vic? So Cara, Katja and then Henry and then I again.
This was just based on something I thought I heard, but that you just said actually, which was that one day of education is zero point five percent of the child's educational career, but that's one day per school year, isn't it? I don't know. Just wanted to clarify that.
That's right, too.
And I asked this question for, I wanted to know first two things. One is the breakdown of the age groups or the year groups that are the worst attendance. And the other one which struck me is do you work with the academies? Because secondary school seems to be quite high level attendance, but most of the schools, even secondary schools in Bristol are too, are academies. Um, and yeah, who is actually missing from the school, specifically secondary? The S E N is obviously higher, but that's, I'm presuming S E N schools, not S E N children in secondary schools or mainstream schools.
So if I take, take each of those in turn, so, um, uh, in terms of working with academies, um, so we, we do in terms of our statutory duty, uh, we will have to offer support to academies as well as great exports to all schools within Bristol. Um, and we're looking at that for, in terms of how we communicate that back out to schools at the moment as part of the redesign and service. Um, so that's not to take away the responsibility that schools have, uh, themselves to support their children, their communities. Because often they know about, um, children who are starting to decline in their attendance, um, uh, before we do. So, so that's important, but also the wider partnership when we're thinking about the support that maybe needed from health, the certain children, young people, uh, particularly where they might have, uh, mental health need or, you know, uh, school avoidance, emotional school avoidance. Uh, so it's a broader partnership, not just, uh, you know, we, we play a particular role as a system leader in promoting good attendance, but it's a broader partnership in terms of how we work, the partnership, what about? Um, sorry, your other two questions. So S E N children, um, it is both in terms of, uh, uh, lower than average attendance for children in specialist provision, but also those who are in H C P. So it's both statistics are below the national average. And Mark, would you have a question as well?
Welcome to the recording.
Okay, shall we go to Henry and then, yeah, if you remember.
The, um, report was very detailed, actually. I, I found it very useful and, and interesting to read. But the impression I have, why have absences increased so much since the pandemic not recovered? Is that sort of all underlying thing that has changed? As I used to say.
I'm sorry.
And in your report, you say the absence has increased significantly since the pandemic, but why? What's changed so much since the pandemic for, because it changed a lot of cover?
I mean, there's loads, one hundred percent, there's loads in the national. I think, um, can I give you a personal view? I think, I think there's something about, um, before the pandemic, it was understood that everything, you know, every day, um, the thing that we do is, is children go to school. And I think during the pandemic, we told children not to go to school for good reasons. Um, and, and therefore the sort of, the sort of regularity, the habit has, has become a bit looser with the mileage. Um, and some people talk about such a contract between schools and communities needing, needing to be with them. So that, that's, that's my view. That we, we, we gave babysitter children, it's not, it's not a thing that you do every day necessarily. Um, now that's not to say there aren't children who absolutely struggle with attending school on a regular basis and need that, and need significant support. I think the bit that we're concerned about in this report is particularly the gap between eighty five percent and ninety five percent. So children who would have attended at ninety five percent, which is just a bit above the national average, are now attending at the top of eighty percent, which makes a massive difference in terms of their outcomes because of the number of days that represents during the day. So what, I think we're not particularly, you know, we are very concerned about children not there, you know, for the most, you know, for really serious reasons. We, we want to create more of a habit so that we can get those percentages up. And we just asked a question about academies and year groups. Um, it is, uh, it is the case that the academies have both the highest and the lowest percentages in terms of attendance, as you'd expect. Um, uh, generally year groups that most concerned about is, you're right, it's the year nines and tens. Um, and obviously if you go to year elevens, that does drop off. And the paper says that it drops off because you've got study room. So it's not necessarily that last of the six months. But it's, it is particularly year nines and tens that the student attendance drop off at. Uh, I, I think it happens at all, some of your schools, it does. Our job to work with academies as Vic says, um, and we, we do do that. And they're doing a lot of work in through, through the attendance.
There's also the years when the, the main behavioural issues that have come after the pandemic, we've noticed. Not all children, obviously, has met that strike, but there has been a behavioural problem with year eight and nine. And one of the signs that I've read recently that says it's because not only do they not attend in school every day, like you said, the contract was the normal thing to do, but it's also that, I don't know, I, I've spoken to lots of teachers about twenty percent of the children didn't do anything or didn't have any attempt, any adapt during the pandemic and they are all primary school. They're now hitting puberty and the behaviour, and I'm wondering if the two are linked. I can't, and I'll say they are, but, um, I'm wondering if the two are linked. It's just a small minority, but.
And it's a bit terrible, isn't it, that currently ten are, were the children, were the year group that didn't, didn't have a year six, seven transition? They were the years that, that didn't, you know, so, you know, I'm not, as you say, we'll be very careful because it's not, it's generalizations, but is that code?
And the other thing I, that, I mean, you know, there's research on this is that have, the, the lockdown did see a change in work patterns for adults. And there are a lot more adults that are now working from home. Um, and that is, that, their children will notice that that's going on. Um, and the group between eighty five and ninety five may well fit in with that. But what schools will do when they look at attendance is firstly, they'll look at patterns and say, is it always a Wednesday or is it every other Friday? You know, they'll look for patterns to begin with, uh, and then there'll be some children that fit into those patterns. And then you look and kind of investigate what's going on for those children. It could well be that, given the, um, the levels of inflation, that actually we're going to take our children out for two weeks because it's, I don't know, a thousand pound cheaper or something. And the fine, we just, you know, is still eight or a bit less, even if we pay the fines on top of that. That could, yeah, so it's, it's lots of cumulative things that have, that are having, um, an impact on, um, children's attendance. And each individual school needs to have a handle on how many are in which category and what they're doing for each, for each of those children. And then what they're doing at the kind of general level to just reiterate messages about the importance of going to school. Um, and during lockdown, um, the experience of locking schools down, opening them back up, locking them back down again was really sort of unstable, really unstable, both for, for families, regardless of the age of the child really. And that, I, I remember that there was a day in January where the schools were open and then the next day closed. And those, that has got a long tail, when it, when you're, I don't know, nine, ten, there's a long tail on that. Because when you're nine. When you're, I don't know, nine, ten, there's a long tail on that because when you're nine, this could go on for two years as part of, it's a large part of your life. And it will take a number of years for that to be a distant memory and for it to be much, a much shorter percentage of that child's life than what the COVID period was really. As adults, we kind of think, oh, well, you know, it's in the past and it didn't last that long anyway. But when you're nine or ten, it's a long period of time and a large part of your life.
I work with sixteen to eighteen months. And one of the biggest things that I've found talking to some of these kids that have come through COVID as young teenagers is a lot of their, a lot of their socialising is moved online. And so there's a massive impact on, on kids actually going out and actually having conversations face to face. So majority of them are literally coming into the, into the college, barely speaking to each other, but having great conversations while they're gaming on an evening. And then we'll be gaming all night and then not wanting to go to school and do stuff in the morning. I also wondered if there was a difference between sort of like the primary age kids that were coming through COVID and live secondary years in terms of the younger ones who wanted to go out and do stuff and getting kind of caught up in trouble. And the older ones are becoming more reclusive. And, yeah. And that kind of different, different level of impact that it's having on those who were affected and what age group they were in. Because I literally have sixteen year olds who walk in my class and don't want to speak because they didn't for so long and they just don't know how to have a conversation. And a lot of kids are coming through that were homeschooled in the last couple of years because they weren't in school and then they didn't want to go back to school. And I don't know if things like meat had a rise in the, during and after COVID because kids just didn't want to do it. Simply just didn't want to do it.
And I mean, it is the case that speech, language and communication is the biggest need for our younger primary age children. So that group of children that didn't have that kind of preschool, socialising with each other and other adults have, has, we've seen an impact there at the kind of population level. And for the old, for the older ones, the biggest need is social and emotional and mental health needs, which again fits into the impact at the population level of COVID. And both of all of those things will impact on how a child feels about going to school and how safe they feel there and how secure they feel there and how included. It's really complex. I mean, this discussion has exposed really how complex it is and how individualised the support needs to be. And it needs to be, yes, individual at that child level from their particular school, but then there's other layers. And also, the other thing that we've been, Hannah and I have been discussing is how do we support parents and their employers, particularly because they're kind of big, they're a big element of adult lives, if they're in work, to support their employees and for those employees to feel that actually, this, if their, if their child, if their child is struggling to get to school, to have, to be able to have that conversation or be able to feel safer in their own environment than they're not the only one. Because any attendance drive can't just be getting the kids to school because of all the complexities that we've, we've discussed. And we've not even looked at what are schools doing curriculum wise, relationship wise, in order to entice and welcome those children in. And that's a whole nother big conversation about that. I mean, it's well, Lee, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, we've obviously, like, I was going to say about how complicated it is to begin as a child who's gone, who went through that. I think it's hard to underestimate the impact of your safe place, which you were talking about, your safe place becoming potentially unsafe and having to wear masks and keep us, you know. And all that, and missing that vital transition as well for a lot of children. And yeah, I'd also can say that I think that the emphasis on attendance, obviously really important, but there needs to be that recognition that it is a really complicated issue. And no parent wants their child at home. I do, you know, like, it's very difficult to function if you have a child at home, if you've got a job that, even if you've got a job at home, that's, you know, it's a really difficult way to, to manage unless you've made that choice to, to home educate. But having that support, so we were very, very lucky in, in our family that we were both at home and we had a lot of flexibility, we were able to support my son back into school. But that involved huge amounts of time on our behalf, which not everybody has. So I think that understanding that, that it is really important to be in school, but it can be quite complex. And I spoke on the other thing, which I think is linked, is, is talking about HGP and SEN. So I think more of that emerged post-COVID as well. So I think a lot of families sort of thought their children were all right and then actually realised that they were struggling at school and then the schools started to pick up more SEAs and then get more HGP. So, so it's all linked, you know, it's, it's all part of the same sort of moving puzzle.
And then Kerry.
One other one to propose, sorry, I don't think Kerry still wants to go, is that we have a task and finish group on this because it is a hugely complicated structure. I'd love to have teachers come in and talk to us about situations from all levels. I'd like professionals to, you know, so we can really read through things to see what it is. Because like you said, you have the different SEN ones or that sort of thing. Is school such a happy place for every child? I know we want that ideal and I definitely agree with you that they should be in school because of all the dangers outside of school and all the other things. But for quite few children to school, secondary school is not a happy place for them. And how can we influence, all these kinds of questions we have, I'm not saying we'll solve them now, but if we could have a task and finish group on this, I would propose that, and if the others would be interested in that.
It isn't, we haven't got a task and finish group from here, but if it is, shall we take the suggestion and then see if there's other suggestions that committee members may have been thinking about or thought about? And then you and I and the leaders, we can have a discussion about this. So there could, it could be that it's that absolutely or something linked to it. But how about that for a proposal, that we kind of talk to the rest of our parties and then have a think about ourselves, what it is that we should ask. Can we get in one?
We can have two, probably.
We have two, probably, yeah, all right, all right. Well, then, okay. We've kicked off the task and finish group, so now what is it really that members are wanting to bring forward? And then we can discuss this when we meet sort of separately in the review with the officers, those sorts of things. Kerry?
You briefly mentioned penalty notices and the reasons why people take their kids out of school. Of course, if you, if it's five and five cheaper before half term and it's a hundred quid fine, of course, of course you would, you wouldn't. But if the fine was set like, regardless of your people and its ownership, then the more wealthy are people, but they're just going to pay on their own.
Yeah.
And poorer people just won't come on holiday, but they might take their kids out of school for whatever reason. But I wanted to ask, it says increasing the, the term impact. So that's, that's kind of directed towards parents who take their kids out of school, but it's not always the parents' choice. Some of us, some parents keep banging on, right? Some of us, it, it's, it's not a choice, it's forced upon us. So what are the determinants for schools to stop them pushing our kids out? Because we all want our kids in school, but, but, you know, as a councillor, I get parents phoning me, like, all of you do, parents in here are saying, this school's not working for us. So what's the deterrent for the schools?
So in terms of the fines, they are nationally set, so that's how much it is. And if there's one parent, one parent will get fined, if there's two parents, both parents will be fined individually. And you're right, I think there is a subset possibly even in there, but, but okay, how much is it? What's the difference? We're going to take that, right? And that's, I would hope that those were the group parents that any individual school is coming to the authority to ask, can you find them? Because the school, well, I guess it's a local authority, it's the local authority that sends fines out, academies can't find school, the local authority does that. But when, when a request comes in, the welfare officers would be looking underneath to see what is going on underneath here, what else have they done with this particular family? What's the pattern of attendance, all that sort of thing? Maybe you want to expand on that, I'm just talking about my job ideas for a few years. But it is, how do we respond to, you know, what kind of support, I suppose, is there around education welfare and attendance issues for schools? And we might talk about the belonging stuff, really, because that's also what you're touching on now, isn't it? It's curriculum appropriateness and belonging.
Yeah, and I think, so obviously, you know, I said, here's my sister's, it's part of a voting of professionals who are working in families. So where they are picking up issues, where there are, you know, support, you know, we can provide an additional part, we can provide, we, 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 as far as we possibly can, doing that so they don't act in a special space is, is the first point. Or do you consider whether to get in action, they can, as we say. The policy on fines set by the last government was before they, just from the election. Yeah, I think the new government, but it was very sort of clear, as you say, the guarantees was much sharper, because they must have that much shopping and the fines increase. And just on your point about the tariff for schools, I mean, I've got data in front of me, which from the secondary school in Bristol sent to me on results day, who said that children attending more than ninety percent were achieving seventy-three percent to four plus, so that, that means a season above. But children between eighty and ninety percent, sixty percent, so there's a drop, a ten percent drop, and then eighty percent or below, right down to fourteen percent. So schools are really, aside from everything else, schools are really seeing the impact in terms of results, if we, from their attendance, which I see in the accountability structure. So I, you know, I suppose I would argue that, I think, I think we would hope that every school is doing anything they can to increase attendance and to encourage children and families to attend. One of the reasons why I was, I was finding when you were debating this is I think it's really good that we're having this discussion and having this start of term, because I don't think there is anything, you know, I think it's one of the things most important things, that we as a city, working with schools, between the childcare services and providing parents, can collectively support the group of people who are attending this. So many benefits that will come out of it, so I think it's a helpful discussion.
I think on, on penalty notices, there's, there's mixed research as to whether they have the effect that is designed in terms of changing that relationship with the school. I think, as you say, for some families, it may be, but it's fundamentally favourable to incur the notice and then, you know, continue to let children out. And, you know, conversely, it can also be quite penalised for families that can't afford penalty notice and, so I think the approach we're taking is relationship first in terms of our relationship with the family in terms of what might be, could be a breakdown of relationship between school and parent, it could be wrapped up in other issues that, you know, in terms of not attendance before you get fined, potentially, you know, your child's ten could be wrapped up in other issues. And they may be intersectional, they may be about support from early health services, from health services, from our outreach patient team as well. So before we get to any type of legal intervention, penalty notice, it's about, you know, that support and those steps that the school has also quite fast done, what they need to do in terms of supporting their child to attend well. So it, it's a collaboration of the partnership, but the penalty notice is up there for that, for that purpose and that's a national position, that's what it has in itself.
Okay, thank you very much. So this report, there's no key decisions on this, this is for us to note. And I think that Catch has suggested a good way forward, that this is something that we take a bit more of a deep dive in and get and hear from those actually on the ground that deal with this from across the city. The last point I want to make about school attendance is that we, what we see within the date of the school attendance is the disproportionality that we see across the board and therefore the resource and the attention that's needed for those, the schools and the families in those situations and schools serving communities that are suffering from more than one disadvantage is going to be higher. And I agree, I mean, I don't, I think every school wants their children, and of course they do, it's about how skilled they are, enabling every child and to engage and every family to feel confident enough and trust the school in them to do that. And that takes, that takes time. Okay. Right, so I think we're almost at the time now, which is Children in Care Sufficiency Strategy. And this is for us to ratify. So each, every authority needs to have a sufficiency strategy for children in care. And this is a key decision because it affects, well, it affects every ward potentially across the city. And so I can ask Gail Rogers, she's going to take us through the report and then we will have opportunity for comments and questions after that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so as we've heard, this is bringing the twenty twenty four to twenty seven sufficiency strategy through to yourselves and committee for approval and publication. And you've got the report itself, the strategy itself at appendix A. So we've got a legal duty to, under section twenty two G of the Children's Act, to take steps to ensure that as far as practicable, we can provide children in care with homes that meet their needs. And that's within our area, if possible. That involves making sure there's sufficient range and number of providers capable of meeting the different needs of our children in care. As part of this, we issue a sufficiency strategy, setting out exactly how we're dealing with that. And that will be different in the different times we publish it, because we look at the cohorts of children in our care, what's happening at different times. This is a three year strategy and, and it might be, as I said, we update that and bring that back to you in time if things change significantly. But it's intended to signal really to providers, so to the wider market, and it's setting out our priorities for the coming years so that they can develop their businesses accordingly. So the strategy sets out our ambitions to keep children local and to increase placement stability through developing market, creating more specialist provision in or close to Bristol. We want to increase local homes, Bristol children, to ensure that they can retain consistent links and access to local education, health and social care services. And our strategy sets out how we're going to achieve this and the anticipated time scales for that. So our key intentions over the next three years are that we prevent children and young people coming into care in the first place, therefore supporting our sufficiency, that we increase our local sufficiency in and around Bristol, that we develop provision for safety and urgent need for children who come into care very suddenly in an unbound way, and that we increase placement stability and increase reunification or step down to a family setting. So the strategy sets out with the national and the local picture, so there's data in there for you around children in care and sufficiency, and presents our growth balance through the scale up of our own in-house children's homes and through bringing in a strategic partner, and which we're in the process of establishing at the moment. This should increase the number of children who can be cared for or within our own homes from current number of fourteen up to thirty-six. And then we've also got plans for further provision through our capital mandate in the Committee Committee in October. So this sets out the development work as being undertaken as well around fostering, including the rollout of the Mockingbird model, which is an evidence-based model structured around the support and relationships and extent that family can provide for children in foster care. And it sets out the capital works programme to develop additional bedrooms in existing foster care homes. That's the strategy in an, in an nutshell. I'm happy to take questions. So is anybody got any questions about this sufficiency strategy?
So is there any further questions about this sufficiency strategy?
On page forty-four, there are the highlights, what children in care said, as this might be from safety, et cetera. How many children were surveyed to get that figure?
Oh, I'm not sure now, I'm afraid. And that, that will come from all of the work that goes on with our children in care through the Children in Care Council and various others. So if I can find that out for you and bring that back, would be helpful if you'd know.
Thank you. So we approved, does this go for council? I'm not, was it just for us?
It's, it's for you to approve.
Okay, so it's for us to approve. And then it will be, and it's a document that the corporate parenting panel will have sight of at a, you know, a sort of regular ongoing basis to make sure basically it's being delivered. And then if, you know, if there are stinking, stinking toolbox in there, what it is that's going on for that. So whilst we see headline figures, what's going on underneath, where, when, who, is actually for the corporate parenting? And those meetings for obvious reasons are not included? Okay, thank you, Gail.
Me?
Yeah, so I need to read something out now. So this is something we both, we need to vote on. So we are to, thank you, approve the sufficiency strategy for children in care in Calibers for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty seven for publication. So this goes on the website?
Yeah.
Yeah, this will go on our website. Okay, so I need to ask you to indicate really clearly if you're going to vote for this recommendation, please. I'm sorry, can you second it, please, Penta Sora?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you very much. So if you are voting for, can you put your hands up, please? So we're really clear. So that's you now. Okay, so now you have done a little sentence. Okay, thank you very much. And that takes us on to item number ten, which is new residential framework for social care. And again, this will be scaled, it's going to take us through this. It's a key decision because it affects more than two wards and is going to be quite a bit higher than half a million pounds. So I'm going to hand over to South Gail to talk us, talk us through what this is and why it's a benefit for us. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So the paper is seeking approval from yourselves to join and purchase children's home placements from the South Region Residential Care Framework, which is led by Southampton City Council. So independently, independently provided children's residential care is a key method by which the council complies with our duties to provide high quality care to children in care. The number of children living in residential children's homes at the moment is ninety. To comply with procurement regulations, we have, must have a contract to purchase children's home placements from. We're currently part of the South Central Residential Framework Contract, which is owned by All Health and Food Church and Pool. This framework will end in September twenty four. And so from October, Southampton City Council will lead the new iteration of the framework, which will have twenty-one authorities and part of the Southern Region Residential Consortium. And that will give us a bit of additional purchasing power. In order to be admitted to the framework, providers need to evidence their registered with Ofsted and they need to pass quality checks on service delivery, safeguarding and equalities. The residential costs are high in the cost to the council and so it is important that we play a role in shaping the market to ensure that placements are suitable, cost effective and delivering great outcomes for children. The framework ensures that we have value for money while we're doing this as providers are required to submit their prices at the point of tender. And also there's an annual uplift mechanism and process whereby providers have to evidence why they need an uplift and why increases required. So as the lead authority on this, Southampton, pures and leads that work on the contract management and quality assurance providers on the framework. But Bristol will retain its part in that. Joining the regional framework will bring us the following benefits. So commissioning as a larger consortium of authorities with a larger market share allows us to more meaningfully engage with and manage the market. And it also enables us to routine efficiencies in purchasing and the development of services. Coordinated response and clear leadership following provider concerns and Ofsted inadequate ratings. And it will give us a clear process for engaging and monitoring providers. It brings us collating information as well on need and usage that will help us to engage the market in terms of development of new homes and services as a consortium. So we can do that together as a block of twenty-one authorities. Framework contracts are standard practice across the council for contracting with providers. And although there's a frightening amount of money on there, under a framework, there's no minimum commitment to spend and authorities can be all multiple frameworks. So there's no committed spend under a framework contract. But we anticipate that our annual spend will be up to sixteen billion per year. So with the framework running from October twenty twenty four to September twenty twenty eight, and there are two options to extend for a further two years each time as well. That's approximately, I can call that fee actually. So there's, there is an initial procurement fee that we have to pay to the lead local authority in this, which is seven thousand four hundred to join the framework. And then, then we pay on a number of placements within balance that we, that we have within charged on usage. So on our numbers of children's home placements, we think that will be about almost eighteen thousand a year. Sorry, and then, I want to take any questions on that?
Okay, thank you. So this is one of our more expensive elements. With children's services, we're counting, and then Sarah? Yeah, and then Carrie, and I'm going to remember.
I have to say for us as Labour, and we must have the idea that we have to go to private providers for this kind of service. I'm not going to vote it down, are we? Is it much? Because you do hear about them making quite a lot of profits out of this and it's becoming an investment thing, as I've read, from what I've read. Is there any plans to try and bring this down and bring it more in-house? So then, I know that you don't have to spend that money. Is this sort of the strategies going forward that we can bring less and less and bring it more in-house?
Yeah, so there's a, there's actually a nice link with their summer sufficiency strategy. So within that, you'll see that we are looking to, well, obviously places will be out of Bristol as well. We're looking to try to build our own sufficiency within Bristol. And our plans are that we bring, we increase the number of in-house residential from fourteen to thirty-six. And some of that, however, some of that will be for a strategic partner, that they will work with us as a partner in Bristol. And some of it is delivered directly by our own teams. The reason for having a strategic partner around that is simply that the scale of growth is probably more that we can manage as an organisation in a short period of time. But absolutely, a strategic partner would, will work as well to allow the rates. And so that, that would be a significant number of children that we can bring within our own children's homes.
And are we working with Gorham Homes and Housing that use for capital investment and to try and see if we can work together with housing and how we can, because apparently there was one housing that had done on a basic scale, Gorham Housing was trying to build some near the children's home as well, together with it. So doing more with that sort of?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so that we have two Gorham homes coming online in October. I think so they're competing. There's just some work going on around completing the roadworks infrastructure on that. So that's our strategic housing partner. And that's, that's just a really good initiative the council working with its own to develop for that need. Yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to check. You put in the figures that we sort of anticipate our annual spend will be up to sort of sixteen billion a year. How does that compare with our current framework? And what we sort of have been spending under that?
Yeah, that's largely based on the volumes and the, and the price in our existing framework. So we legally have to, our framework expires. So we legally have to enter into another world. We have a little bit more purchasing power. But so we hope that prices won't go up in the new framework. So it will, it pretty well would be at the same sort of level that we're seeing now.
Okay then. So any other questions or comments that I was just to make about this? No? Okay, so there are two recommendations that I need to read out. Okay, sorry. All right, so there's two recommendations in here. So number one is to authorize the executive director of children education in consultation with the chair of CYP committee to take all steps to join award and purchase from the South Region or South Region Residential Children's Home Framework in line with procurement rules and to the maximum budget that's outlined in this report. And the second point is that it authorizes the executive director of children to invoke any subsequent extensions or variations, specifically defined in the contract being awarded up to the maximum amount within the budget in the report. So as I understand that, it means that the contract, there's some flexibility within the contracts. And so then what we're saying is if that flexibility is needed, we're authorizing that to be done by the director of children's education. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it can be extended following this for the two subsequent two-year extensions under authorization from the executive director.
Okay. Can I have a second for those two, please?
I'll second those two.
Okay, thank you very much. I just seconded those. So we're going to ask for those that are voting for the recommendations to please indicate clearly using your hands. And that's anonymous. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so that's item number ten. So it's on to our next item. We've put some time up, we're fast, you'll be glad to hear. And this time, it's another of these contracts that we've just spoken about. But this time it's for the independent non-maintained special school placement contracts. And Gail, that's you again. Gosh, you're on.
Hello.
The star at the moment, take us through it, please.
Yes, thanks very much. Okay, so for this paper, we're seeking approval to invoke the existing extension clauses in the independent non-maintained special school framework contract that Bristol is a member of and from which we purchase our INM school placements. So the contract's commissioned by a consortium of eleven local authorities and is procured by Wiltshire. So much the same as the other range of local authorities and procured by the other local authorities. The initial five-year term that we've got for this framework expires in December twenty four. And we are looking for approval to invoke the two-year extension clauses, taking us up to December twenty twenty six. And it's our intention to use those two years to develop a new contract that better meets our requirements. So the value of the extension we're asking for is over five hundred thousand and so it does require a key decision. As of April twenty twenty four, two hundred and twenty-three children and young people are in independent non-maintained placements. The average cost of a day placement is seventy-three thousand pounds a year. There are then thirty-eight children and young people who are in residential INM placements and the average cost of residential placement is two hundred and eighty-four thousand a year. And twenty-eight point seven percent of our placements are with charities and seventy-one point three are with profit-making organisations. To comply with procurement regulations, we must have a contract to purchase these placements. And the council looks to work with other level authorities to develop joint framework contracts, such as this one that we're working together on. It gives us a bigger market share and a strong reliability to join even to the market. So as with the last one, there is no commitment to spend under a framework. So if there are no placements to make, there is no commitment to spend anything. But the value that's attached to the contract is the maximum that the council is allowed to spend. This isn't new spend. This is about compliant procurement route for existing spend that we're looking at. So the annual contract value for Bristol is five million seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, up to a maximum twenty-eight, must I say that again? Up to a maximum of twenty-eight million seven hundred and ninety-five thousand over five years and a two-year extension, which we're looking for, will increase the maximum value by eleven million five hundred and eighteen thousand, about five million seven hundred and fifty-nine a year. Our actual spent a day on the contract is just under ten billion. And that's because a lot of our, a lot of our contracts are made off framework. When we did, when we searched and we sent out consults, we don't have anything that from providers on the framework. We then need to search off contract. We obviously want to try and make as many placements on framework as possible because we control the cost on framework. So it's important that we do have these. But providers aren't under any obligation to join the framework. In financial year twenty three, twenty four, our actual spend on these services was twenty-one million six hundred and ninety-three thousand three hundred. And the council's got a six-year plan to reduce reliance on the independent sector as part of the dedicated schools grant deficit management. So we're seeking approval to extend the contract so that we have a compliant procurement solution as before. And we'll use the time to build a better contract that meets our needs. We started working with a smaller collegiate group of local authorities that neighbor, that neighbor in Bristol. And we were working with those local authorities and frequently to write steer upon developing a regional commissioning hub as well. Again, to bring more access to the right sort of provision for children and to gain a market advantage and steer. Okay, so I'm happy to answer questions on the extension of this framework.
Okay, thank you. So if you've got any questions about this, pipe up.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Fairly right on that, I'm new to this. Okay, I was looking at the two hundred and eighty-four thousand average cost for residential placement. And I was actually wondering, just why is it so expensive? Is there a way of getting like a breakdown of what exactly is being spent on the children to enable them to do whatever for that amount of money? Because it just seems like an extraordinary amount of money.
It's awesome. Before any placements are made and actually for providers coming on the framework, they will send their breakdown of costs. And that's obviously an average will be exactly the same. The costs, the INM residential placements are a combination of specialist school setting and residential care for a child. So they are at fifty-two weeks of the year, usually being looked after. In fact, there are some placements that would be turned residential term time only. And there might be reasons that a child goes to a term time in residential provision. But the ratio of staffing in specialist settings is quite high. And the ratio of care as well for that twenty-four, seven care. So it is expensive. We do have a breakdown of that, the work that we're doing, I suppose. And we're trying to move away from that reliance on the independent non-maintained market is to, will be around building our own, like developing our own sufficiency of special school provision in Bristol. And also where children require a fifty-two week placement for that residential to, to build the sufficiency of care provision around them, the foster care around them as well. So yeah, and the market. So yeah, and the market at the moment calls a lot of the shots, which is why frameworks are so important because when you have providers on framework, you tie them to a cost. Whereas when you have to purchase off framework, then prices can be an awful lot higher.
All right, so if we were, you've got the six-year plan, so kind of produce it and bring it more in-house. So we're happy, and that would produce those costs down in terms of how much it is per placement per child.
Yeah, I think what I would say is we would, fewer children would need this type of provision, so I know we'll probably move on to the capital strategy as well for send around that later, but.
I'm not playing with the money.
No, I didn't.
I just want to spend it in the right way.
So our plans, you know, for capital expansion are that we're building on resource basis in schools. You know, build, we're building additional places in Bristol where we can that address those, the needs of children with special education needs at the moment where schools feel that they're not able to meet that. And we're also supporting schools to be able to provide outside, to meet needs at a slightly higher level as well. So you will hear that there is a significant amount of work going on towards that. But it's a six-year plan, but capital developments obviously take a little bit of time. And in the meantime, we're looking for extension for this and we're working with a small group of local authorities to look actually how we can block contracting and keep prices as low as possible and keep INN places that are in our local region for our local young people.
Just happy to add as well to what Gail was saying, in terms of the costs that you'll see, it will also relate to the specific professional advice that will have been taken at the point of the needs assessment that will inform, you know, certain specific therapies or certain classes that will dictate actually the kind of spend that it would be, which is both that can meet the specialist but also sometimes for our children. May specifically requiring then specialist setting, these are complex needs for that purpose.
And Ellie? Just a very quick question. We've talked a lot about costs. Is there any kind of quality standards that come with this framework? This is an assurance, Gail, that helps with that as well.
Yeah, I mean, we have more oversight of quality for providers who are on the framework. So every provider, in order to get onto the framework and work with us, needs to submit a whole set of documents, a quality, quality and cost information actually, so that we can look at their policies, their procedures, so that we can assure that there is quality in that. And then across that consortium, causing that framework, we will score those together. There are safety questions, there are questions on the quality of professional teaching and oversight, so. And there is also, as part of that framework, then we have access to a wider group of, or to essentially managed place where we can challenge our quality as well, where we've seen things that we're worried about. So yeah, I think they give us a better means of assuring quality.
Okay, so anybody else that wishes to question on that? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. So this is a key decision. So the report, I need to read out what recommendation is. So the recommendation is that we as the Committee for Children and Young People authorize the executive director of children and education in consultation with the chair to extend, these aren't my words, the pseudo-dynamic purchasing system for the provision of CSO 877, South West and South Central Flexible Framework for independent or non-maintained special schools for up to two years in line with the procurement routes and the maximum budget outlined in this report. I do have a question about what CSO 877 relates to. Does anybody know?
That would be a contract number, so it'll be a single contract.
Okay, okay, thank you. So that is the officer recommendation. I'm the second, if we're going to take this through.
I can leave you standing there again?
Okay, thank you. Got you, I was going to second that. And if there's no further comments or questions, we can go to join to vote on this. Okay, so we need to, we're going to go for those that are voting for the recommendation, please raise your hand. We've got anonymous again. Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Brilliant. Okay, we need numbers. So that takes us to item, agenda letter number 12. And we're even more ahead on timing, I'm pleased to say. But we're having good discussions as well. So, okay, so item 12 is the Education Capital Projects Update. And just doing that, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, councillors. I was listening, I saw the agenda and I was listening to the conversation and I thought somebody's forced into the wrong direction because it doesn't actually form a previous discussion there. The full drive of education around now is actually around provision of specialist spaces within the city. It is really geared to reduce our reliance on independent non-maintained places. So this paper is really, not entirely, but largely around not needing to use contracts, but just approve the extension of. It's worth reflecting that. There is an answer, this is a key decision, there are answers in this contract, we're looking through them now quickly. We received from the Department for Education that high needs capital grant funding. This is money grant funding capital specifically for the creation of new specialist provision within our city. So the first decision we're asking tonight is to allow us to accept 4.4 million pounds of capital for that purpose. We also receive grant funding from the department for maintenance on our educational sector. So we are asking to accept and allocate 1.8 million pounds of condition grant funding so that we can look to maintain the estate that we have within our maintained provision. We are also asking to allocate 13.2 million pounds of safety valve grant funding awarded by the department to the extension and refurbishment of special school. And we'll talk to you a bit more about all that as an event while we're talking about the timing. We are asking to approve the allocation of 2.5 million pounds of grant funding to deliver new kitchens at Ashford Primary School, at St Paul Primary School. These are kitchens that are needed due to health and safety issues within those kitchens and also the need and desire to deliver free school meals within those settings. I hope you talk a bit more about that as we go through and ask questions if you do. We are asking to approve the rebase lining of some second S E N D construction projects, expansion projects in flight at the moment. I will explain to you why that is the case as we move through. Of course, the time chairs, so I won't rush you, that's okay. I'm not sure I get the information correct. I'm also asking the committee to note that we will have another paper and we have got a four-plan for March next year to return to you with the next iteration of the capital program, the next key decisions you as a group need to make, which will continue to deliver the cases required to meet the needs of young people in the city, to deliver the targets of the safety valve and to reduce our reliance on those independent non-maintained places. So this is, this is a conversation, this is the start of the conversation which we continue to have as we move through the years going forward. So a little bit of background, if that's okay. So at the time of writing the paper, there was 180,000 people awaiting specialist placements in the city. There were another 200,000 people awaiting assessment from the HCP. So you can see there is today a need for places before you take a look at the pages we discussed previously in the meeting. We are very aware, as officers, of the need to create visiting capacity. We have been working on it for five years, really. We have been utilizing grant funding received by the department. The resource has been limited, I will say. But to confirm in this paper, we have, in our first wave specialist provision projects delivered three hundred and five places. They are operational, they are now already. They do not form part of the 500 new proposed places that we've got up to the plan of the next five years. They are there already. We do have currently, we actually do plan now, which we discussed at the end, 108 places to deliver. So it's worth just, you don't seem kind of the vision for the education. It's all part of what we're doing, as I think that perhaps will lead to VIX, VIX, our organization on C6 and the FIR. So we see our goal very much as meeting the needs of young people, the HCPs within Bristol, the Bristol area, within Bristol boundary, ideally within their specific part of the city, so to produce travel. We are all about creating really high-quality places. And we want to work with providers and educators to enable young people to deliver really high-quality outcomes in their local areas. And we want to create a sustainable commissioning environment that provides choice for young people to families, while creating within the limits of the dedicated schools around. So in a sentence, we want to create a sustainable environment where young people can go to the schools today, and those schools are equipped to meet their needs and there is a number of choices there, options available. So that's what the Education Capital Program is seeking to deliver on behalf of, I call it, our children and our families. So I'll run through the decisions one by one. And the new grant funding I've explained is highly education capital grants. I don't see this as being controversial, but we're asking you to allow us to accept it, to put it into our education capital program. It will need to come back through a key decision once it is ready to be allocated to the appropriate projects to deliver additional places. And that is likely to be a barge coming to the market by the next, the next hour or two, the committee. The new grant funding for schools' condition right allocation will be utilized for planned maintenance over the next year to two years. It's going to go through the committee for property and bases. It's one of those through with our colleagues in the building practice and the corporate landlord, undertake that on behalf. We're looking to allocate it into our budgets so that we're making available to them to allocate. I'll talk about Claremont Special School, let's ask the question right away. Claremont Special School is a school for the frowning sealed young people. It's located in Henley's. I'll be a little bit flippant in my understanding, it looks a bit like a school that's been put into the Addams Family Mansion. So it's really old, it's taken a huge amount of maintenance. It is approaching the end of its life, so we will enter into a room and area space without building necessary to put that is done, where we will be at risk of closing parts of it, or maybe not be able to do anything in course. So we need to do something with it, even if we weren't going to do this, but what is. We did go to Cabinet in 2019 and asked for approval to refurbish and extend it. Approval was given subject to achieving the full funding. This is an expensive project and so we were never able to quite get there because resources have been tight around typical central government. We do now have the opportunity with a safety valve investment to complete the project and to actually free up a number of significant places. Fifty in the Red and Green Resource Base, which will be decimated as part of the school into the main site. And 20 additional places for high-cost places, for high-cost places, which where it was being in the non-maintained sector because obviously found the same young people have a much higher need. I'll go through in minutes the projected savings of this project will arrive. So what this decision will do is it will allow us to add to the capital we have already in this project, give us a full funding then below, allow us to move forward. And just for clarity, we have got a full planning approval for the scheme. So we look at space on approval, prioritizing procurement of a professional team, allocating the resource within the council, and moving into a tender process to have a tractor and working with the school to find a suitable starting site length to do the works as quickly as possible. So this is a scheme which is well advanced in terms of its project lifecycle and will yield places within two years. And move on to the kitchen projects. The kitchen project will have brought to us by our estate team. Both these schools have very, very small kitchens, which are frankly Victorian in their nature. They are only fit to make the meals for the children without factoring in the early free school entitlement. And they're operating as a bit of a health supervisor for the schools and this is the council. So we have undertaken feasibility studies to understand what we need to do to make it appropriate for all of their working and cooking methods and to make sure they can deliver the required free schools, free school requirements. The feasibility studies are in the documents in the back, if you want to have a look at them. And so we are asking for the approval to allocate the capital we have obtained to complete those projects. We have developed our capital through under spends in other capital projects, so we are not taking money from the highest grant funding. This is money that we have under spent on other capital projects, which we are recycling into this purpose. In terms of the second wave to budget totals, I think it's worth spending just a couple of seconds on this. I spoke to you a minute ago at the start of the conversation about the fact we've delivered 305 places over the last two years. This wave two was the second wave without that aspiration to keep developing the capacity, especially provision within the city. What we have found is that we are working within buildings that are heritage buildings that are very difficult to do, with the effect we took the low hanging fruit, the easy things to do, our first three hundred and five places. So we have encountered issues, particularly with heritage buildings, particularly with poor quality of our schemes, which has meant that we have needed to utilize contingency to manage additional costs in those projects. So that's what this ask is. Because it is a big number across those eight projects, we are asking to allocate 2.4 million pounds worth of contingency to allow us to complete those works and secure those extra 108 places over the next year now. And that's broken down in the table in the paper, if you want to have a look at that. So I thought I'd spend two minutes kind of looking forward and talk a little bit about our projected savings. Two cities in items six of the paper, talk about safety valve, safety valve settlement. The capital, education capital program in the next five years has four key schemes as we've identified them in this table. Scheme one is effectively second wave two, I've just discussed that extra 108 places over the next year, which we are committed to delivering and well progressed with. But we're looking to rebase on the budget so we can ensure we can deliver. Scheme two is the Claremont scheme that we've just discussed. So that is us discuss 20 additional places in the PMLD, part of the open school, and the creation of additional 50 new places, which could be flexed to either ASC or SEMH as required by the city. And you can see here that the projected savings are actually quite significant over the next four, five, six years. There's too many resources. Scheme four is actually a new specialist free school, which the city was awarded probably 18 months, two years ago now. It's a 164-place free school to be operated by the Enabe Trust. The DFP has selected an operator for it, however, they have not progressed the capital delivery for the scheme. Effectively because the RAC issues within the department has diverted all every source of pro-advancement. Effectively because the RAC issues within the department has diverted all every source of redevelopment and design here as to dealing with the RAC issue. So that's kind of meant that this product languished, however, it is critical for us to be able to deliver sufficiently in the city and to reduce our burden by now. So we are recommending that we self-deliver this scheme. We are currently working through a feasibility study to define the capital budget that we need, which we will then negotiate with the DFE. The DFE have accepted our going to self-deliver and will award us capital to go ahead and build the school ourselves. Decommiting ourselves from a lack of resource and national risk around the resource to rank. We have got the control of the board, we've recently built the Trinity Sapt preschool preschool, so confident that we have been able to do it well. I think it's the lowest risk route to us being able to secure a hundred and sixty-four places, which are much difficult this is here. As part of the March cabinet paper, I expect that we're back here with effectively an outline business case approval and some money created by the Department of Education, that we will be asking to accept and spend for delivering this project. The final scheme, A5, we're calling the same wave three. This is a scheme designed to work with the sector, primary and secondary across the city to identify where we're going to have capital divisions with our partners and the schools and the trusts and with maintained schools to help them meet the needs of young people with high needs and special needs within their communities. Maybe they are school dimensions, like redecorating whilst their school to make appropriate for the young people. It's possible they may be larger dimensions by creating resource spaces or bringing new spaces into their schools. This is a work that is about partnering, it's about finding ways of enabling mainstream schools to meet the needs of young people within their settings who live within their, within best communities. We are currently building a team to go out and have those engagements with the schools now. So in our March cabinet paper, you will have a view of where we are for that. For the outline business case, I suspect there will be an indicative capital program to start to deliver those places. I'm aware I've been talking for a while, but I just wanted to make sure that you've got all that out there, it's a lot to go through. More than happy to take any questions from you.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, this is a very significant paper. Obviously Cam's got it handed up, Carrie's got it handed up, so and Catcher. Okay, and Susan, so Cam, if I get the name Carrie, let's go.
So in terms of the school, the kitchen, this new kitchen project, are there any other schools in the city that have similar struggles with their kitchen, so it needs to be this small? Yeah, so we have our estate team doing surveys for all the schools to understand where there's significant issues. They do feed that back into what we call our Education Capital Program, which looks at, looks at the recommendations and makes decisions as we build the rest of the schools. So we are requesting schools to come forward. So do all the schools have the same issues? And in that case, how would these schools treat themselves, the ones that have a high priority? So I don't know how many schools will have the same issues, but our estate team, these two schools have been an urgent health issue. So they are, the estate team are out working at schools to identify where there is similar need.
Just to add to that, the estate team maybe work with the local authority to maintain schools. So we are also the employer, because I asked this exact time, I was like, why are we putting the money back and not somewhere that we know is of a more deprived area? And the thing that swung it for me was us as the employer, the council's the employer, and the health and safety conditions for the employees are at risk of an issue as well as the size of the kitchen. What's happened in recent years is that the governments were in universal preschool meals for key stage one children, and that's made, that basically meant that more food is needing to be prepared and served. And that's had an impact on every school. For the academies, it's up to them, there's other funding streams and grants that they get, but you know, looking after their buildings is their responsibility. But for the maintained state, it is for us that has the plans to maintain that.
Thank you, Jo, actually, so that this concerns the maintained state, so schools are still run by.
And Carrie?
I was just doing my bit of research there, I was just wondering, are there schools potentially of, 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 of? I was just really happy with the schools, but I didn't get that far into my research. I just wanted to ask, obviously there's lots of information in this report and a lot of money being spent. I suppose what I'm trying to say is, how much of it is going to be sacrificial? Because, you know, part of the movement is one of those deployed areas and you hope the people were educational outcomes. So I just want to make sure that money's being spent in the second city, as well as across the city.
Yeah, we are, we really want to make sure there's a quality distribution here. About minimum, I think is where we are. The work stream, the school, the school planning is, the school is historically beaten. So we do as an organization need to manage that risk. So obviously that requires a decision. I think the scheme A5, as it is, as I said on this table, is really helping students to go, okay, let's go to all the schools, let's make sure it's across the whole city, let's make sure we go to the areas that have the most deprived wards and that have schools there which need support, and let's work with them to find the best places to to invest someone, to build those places, to help those schools meet the needs of those young people, to reduce travel, and especially that those young people have the right local provision and needs. So I think what you'll see is when we come back in March, there will be effectively a rationale for prioritization of the capital program. I think you will see that geographic location has been a really key factor in why something is proposed to commit here for investment.
I'm trying to think how many special, because this is only the LA maintained bit. And I'm trying, and my brain goes, hmm, how many LA maintained are there? There's one secondary in the south that's LA maintained. And I'm struggling to think of any specials, to be honest, that are still LA maintained out there. Yeah. Although, I don't know where Harry's from, it's West Ham.
East, that's east, that's right.
I think Fockmorton is, I was like, you know, brilliant in places, so I, I think Fockmorton is, and that's New Fosway, yeah, so that's investment into the New Fosway provision. Sorry? Yeah. I expect Claremont, Claremont can take something across the city as well, actually, because of the specific nature of the provision that they're, that they're offering. But yeah, I agree. I don't know, there was some others, but yeah, go ahead.
I was just wondering, this is just a thought that I had, with the same wave three, and you were asking the schools to, for capital investment. And I can tell them a very personal story of my own son, who struggled in secondary school, mainly because of William, academically, I will add. But he couldn't cope with the hugeness of the secondary school. And then we moved him on to what they call the studio school, I don't think Academy means that, but we, and that made all the difference. So I was wondering if there was something you could do with making smaller schools. It's not the mainstream educational impact, it's the fact that they, one of a thousand, one of eight hundred, rather than one of, that was a much smaller schools, and they tend, and and that made such a difference to his education, unbelievable.
I think you might want to, I think that we are aware of that kind of scenario. What we're trying to encourage all schools and trusts as well as maintained schools is to come and talk to us about how they can, see as well, better meet those, these, those young people. So if there's young people who find the size of the school problematic, is there an opportunity to create some kind of space in that school where they can go to where there is less people, which is an area which is useful for them, if it comes overwhelming? So we're trying to find opportunities to allow those schools to meet those needs better than they do.
Not only that, is that there's a certain EHCP which I find problematic when you, with autism, that particular, but to autism, because there's a huge range of autism, so I'm not going to say one pile or another. But they actually need social interaction with non-autistic people, and there was a need in this first secondary school where they just literally piled them off in one pile. And actually, he didn't learn any social skills, which he needed to have more work with and import to learn, if you want me.
That's, yeah, that's a good point. I think you're right in that. So every teacher is a teacher of send, I think it's really important, whether you're in a mainstream school or a special school. Teachers should be equipped to support children with special needs, and they are, and they do. So sometimes it's about, I suppose, equipping our teachers with the tools and language that they need to support them. That's often through send codes and through that. Sometimes it's about the environment itself, that actually what we need a good full type setting. I think what James is trying to say, I suppose, is, you know, we are looking at wave three quite realistically, but also we're limited in kind of sites to be can identify. So to create a kind of smaller school with one or two hundred children, we still need a sizable estate to be able to work with. So we are looking kind of far and wide as far away from three in terms of what might emerge, which might be a combination of singular sites where we can, a large, a larger provision, but also smaller sites that can promote inclusion in a mainstream school. So not another place for children to be educated, but, you know, a, a space in the school where they can receive some support with the part of the population as well. So it's about different spaces, different work for the population that we have.
Because even the moment your infants was talking about, that they have to have time to integrate their special needs children with the the other children, so that they get that, it's important. It's important for two reasons, one is obviously for the send child to have that opportunity to mix and be socialized. But the other opportunity which I find is failing, is that mainstream children learn how to work with and include send children, whatever they are, whatever level, wherever they are. Because that, I think, is failing, and that's where the bullying is coming from and the exclusion is coming from.
If I can add, I think statistically, I've seen some recent research, but three to four percent of the population are under a virgin with varying needs. So you absolutely should not be under tension that your virgin children are already educated in other places. It's really important that they are educated in mainstream schools. And I think where I've seen that work, very well again, is about the inclusive nature of the school and the way that it's celebrated and diversity is celebrated. And I think all of our good examples of that, there's a book we need to make that, the law.
Just to support us, I think as a program, this is designed and will continue to be iterated. Something which promotes inclusion within schools, but provides special provision where it is needed for those young people. And there's going to be a constant alignment to make sure we find that balance. I don't think it's the easy thing to do.
Some children just don't do all the information, but some of them. Some children, I wouldn't say every child is going to be that, because it's a sounds of an individual child, but it isn't. I think you really need to also teach the mainstream children that send is part of community and we need to somehow get on with each other.
I mean, I was just going to conclude my, because I think, I mean, for me, this will be a theme that will continue, obviously. This is also a theme we should continue to come back to, with super top provision law, inclusion in mainstream settings. But I suppose for me, it is all about leadership. It is all about, you know, you can find brilliant, huge schools who organize their classrooms in a way that doesn't feel huge and teaching, really good quality teaching, and you can find, you know, not brilliant areas, more schools. You know, and so the quality, particularly the quality of scale of those small schools is difficult as well. So for me, it's all about, if you say, we should have inclusion in schools, every teacher has to teach for send. And I know, again, I would say, schools are trying to get to know various, various different sort of success, and that's what we want to do with them.
Is there anything else still just to comment or ask a question? Yep, go ahead.
I was just looking at the, you said about accepting four point four of new high needs capital grants funding into the Education Capital Program. And then it was about using it, what would free nine million would be recommended to be allocated from the high needs grant. So if it's a high needs grant, is it specifically for young people with high needs? Obviously with Claremont being for high needs. Does it, by taking it, would it mean that there's a reduction in other high needs grant fund going out for other people, for other young people? Is it, to get my name, to take it from, from the high needs into, into that area of the Claremont project being built?
The Claremont grant funding is awarded, based on bid, then, for the Claremont project. So that is, we would not be able to use it for similar levels of after education. The high needs grant funding, which we are asking to allow us to accept, is going to be put into effectively a cost budgetary code, and it will be allocated through a key decision when it is ready to be put into a proper project as part of wave, the episode three, if you call it. So we just make sure that it doesn't float around the corporate, the corporate financial. We want to make sure it's within the Education Capital Program, ready to be allocated when we need to move in certain places. All the other money that we're talking about for, for the previous waves to be baseline is under spends for previous projects which are high needs grant funded, but it's old grant funded money. So we're recycling that into, and to ask for some contingency to make sure we can deliver what we've got in flight. Does that answer your question?
Are there any other comments or questions that people wish to ask? Okay, I've got another load of three D that I need to do. Right, okay, so I need to read them, then I need to second up. That's the order, isn't it? Good, okay, I'm getting the hang of it, okay. So to approve, approve accept four point four million for the Department of Education high needs provision capital into the Education Capital Program. Authorize the Director of Children and Young People in consolidation with the Chair to then spend it as outlined in the report. Number two, approve accept one point eight million Department of Education schools condition allocation into the Education Capital Program. Authorize the Director of Children and Young People in consolidation with the Chair to spend that as outlined in the report. Approve and allocate thirteen point two million safety valve grant funding to the extension and refurbishment of Claremont Special School. Authorize Director of Children in consultation with the Chair to procure all the contracts required to deliver, for the delivery of the redevelopment of Claremont Special School in line with procurement rules to the maximum budget outlined in the report, including contracts over four nine nine K. So only for basically anything over half a million pounds. Approve and allocate the two and a half million basic needs capital grant to the new kitchens in Ashedown and Saffron Park. And then authorize Director of Children in consultation with the Chair to procure and award the contracts required for the extension of kitchens for Saffron Park and Ashedown alongside, in line with procurement rules, to the maximum budget, including contracts over £499,000. And number five, approve the re-baselined budgets for the send wave two project four, Brim Hill Juniors, Harri Crook, North Side Two and Oasis Long Cross. Can I have a second, please?
Yes, I have a second now.
Thank you. Catcher's happy to second. That's brilliant. Thank you very much. So it was long and wordy, but basically it's the projects we've been looking at and we've been reading about. Okay, that's kind of what we're voting on here. So it's obviously more than two wards. It's well over half a million and therefore it's a key decision, so we need to vote on it. And so it's been seconded, so I would ask those voting for the recommendations. We're going to vote on all five and see if we can get through. If we can't, we might go one by one. Okay, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for all five first of all. Catcher, you think that's wrong to play something?
No, I don't think so. I just realized something when you said that I might have an interest. I'm the governor of the council, and I might not be able to vote for that one. I'm not sure. The governor. Your infants, which is.
This is Brim Hill Juniors. Are they separate schools?
I just, when I was going to, I think, I should have said that. I'm sorry. Yeah, they went through the phase one, measured in there, had an overspend of the.
You could excuse yourself from voting, see, try voting it through and see.
Okay, I was like, is that one person? I'm starting to say something, but then I went, oh, shouldn't have done that.
You could stay and vote it if you wanted, you see, if you think there was something to vote it through.
Okay, shall we try that then? So shall we try to vote all five, vote on all five without catcher because of the Brim Hill link? Okay, let's see where we get. Okay, all those in favor of. Oh, yes.
That's a good point. Yes, thank you.
Five seconds, five seconds. Okay, so. Thank you very much. Okay, so. So all those in favor of all of these five recommendations, please raise your hands. You know, yes, yeah.
Thank you very much.
No worries. Thank you. Very well timed. I'm Lisa Spenceville. And so we're onto agenda item thirteen, which is the finance report update.
Do you know that? Are you speaking to this?
Right, so this has already gone through Australian resources. I think it was just about timing as opposed to anything else. So there's anything for us to get to about, brilliant. But so they're kind of repeating, it's the same report, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, thanks very much.
Yes, it is the same information. So we've been, we've been in both of these worlds, so this report and the rest of the report is a report that we're bringing on time. So yes, we see some duplication. I think, so for that reason, I won't, I won't, I won't go on. I suppose it's just worth, obviously it's worth recognizing that what we're reporting here is is obviously significant overspend, as I mentioned, if I recall wrong, on children's and education. And as it says here, we're continuing to work hard. You've heard some of the work that we're doing reported here, so particularly the work around sufficiency is designed to bring down the overspend around placements, particularly children's homes, which are in the capital report, designed to bring, sorry, or in this report, designed to bring down the overspend around placements as a result of building our own house provision. So what you can see in this report is basically there's three big areas of pressure in our, in our general fund, I think that appears to separately. So you've got social care placements where what we're seeing, what we're looking at is an overspend of eighteen million in terms of placements recorded at the end of this period. Then you've got a one point two, sorry, one point nine overspend on home to school transport. And then you've got two point six million, sorry, one point nine million overspend on home to school transport. Then you've got two point six million overspend on a team which we call Simon's Group, and of course, the public funds, which we talked about earlier on. So to take each of those into, around placements, we've reported this before, the residential, it's a, a, a residential placement. The annex, it happens A two, gives you a bit more detail, both on national contacts around growth in terms of children and family services. And particularly both institute government and the Association of Directors of Children's Services showing an increase in child protection plans, contacts, we talked about this earlier on, referrals to children's social care and increases in children care. What you can see there on page two, two seven, is a a graph which shows the number of children starting in seasonal care. If you can answer any questions around this, you can see a growth in the number of children in childcare over that period. And then you can see over the page, the growth in the number of residential placements, which is, which is all the, all the placements which are costing us the most. And where the overspend is sitting in the most, see in the report, the work that we're doing to bring down that overspend, which involves both doing everything we can to keep children at home, their families safely. Where we have children coming into, kind of making sure that as far as possible, they're going into fostering placements as appropriate. And then into our own provision, and then into residential placements if necessary. And obviously all the procurement and commission work that Gels talked about to make sure we manage down cost of those placements. And we're also doing work to what's called step down, so stepping down residential placements back to, I mean, fostering more home safely, obviously within the necessity of safety, so that children can come home safely and as much as possible. Checking that it is the right children in residential placements and they can't come in safely. So we're doing that work as well. So that's the work on placements. And then in home to school transport, you can see here, we're reporting a one point one million there is, and part of that is about the increase in numbers of children going into INMs. We talked about that earlier on in terms of the agenda. So as children are transported from home to special schools and to specialist provision, the transport costs, obviously you're estimating that number of children in the placements. So there's an overspend in any case. There was also a decision taken. I think it is, it is a matter of record that we are exploring what we are doing around this, it's been transport for children with SEN. We did not take that saving that this year, but it was planned into the budget, and therefore that's the referral, that's the reference to savings not made, which is at the bottom of page two, two nine. And we'll continue to devote that in line with our budget pressures. And then thirdly, children, as I said earlier on, who arrive in this country with partnerships, who have no cost public funds and who, for whom we are under the duty to provide and to look after and assess the risks to children. There has been an increase in families arriving in those conditions, and we have been looking at our duties and making sure that we're, you know, caring appropriately within the legal framework and supporting those families appropriately in that team. So that's the pressure, the third pressure, and all together, they mount up to the twenty five million, which is the most significant overspend of the council for sure. And that's what has brought a few further sort of citywide work to look at and manage budgets across the council. So, you know, we really recognize, I suppose, the severity of our team, the financial situation, and we're working with the state and the cross offices to see whatever we can do to manage our budgets as effectively as possible whilst also meeting the issue. And I think that probably that's all I need to say in this report. We're all really happy to answer any questions. Sorry, sorry, one more thing. DSG, does your school work is in this report? It's not, it's not, sorry. I'm making sense. The DSG budget is overall just under half a billion, Bristol, four hundred and ninety one million. As you know, and we've talked about it today, we have a pressure on high needs blockers arising from high level children being assessed with special educational needs. We've got overspend of ten million, which has risen since our submission of the safety valve application in March. And this is above where we thought we were going to be in the work, and you've heard from both James and Rick, to manage provision in particular, so we have sufficient places in the right place, is in order, is to try and manage that deficit down. Again, we've got lots of time, we're not sure we'll continue to do that, but we can talk about the DSG deficit as well, which is important.
Okay, thank you very much. So we don't, there's a good vote on here. This is for information. But given that this is the area of the council with the biggest overspend, and therefore there's a lot of pressure on the senior leads within these departments to basically bring that spend down. So if anybody has any questions about, either further questions about what happens, which bits of budget, why they might be there, how we're going to bring those things down, please, please ask them now. Okay, shall I comment on that? So there has today, there has been nothing coming from national government. High needs, special educational needs, safety valve funding, nothing. We've not heard anything. The previous paper, the thirteen point two million was a capital grant that this authority was able to apply for and get because it was part of the safety valve. The grant that they applied for was twenty five million, and they were given thirteen point two. That will by definition have an impact on the ability to produce more SEN bases that were part of what the previous administration signed up for. What we've also heard is that there is already an overspend in the DSG. So what is not happening is, if there's a need, it's, the spending is there and that's being recorded and it's being vocalized and it's being published and it's being shared. This is what we're doing. Clarenon wouldn't have got that money to be finished off, if you like, because over a number of years, the money for Clarenon has been squirreled away and collected in capital over a while. When the agreement was made with DFE, the full understanding about where, where the budgets were that year, it wasn't updated. So before it was signed, it was already outdated, which I think is quite an interesting position to be in. It's not, at the moment, being the safety valve is not making any difference because the budget's being blown anyway, but we're also in a position where we've got, we've now got the thirteen point two million to build the places that we know we need. The answers and the solutions are the same whether we're in it or whether we're not. What we need from this government are, we need the indications to come down from them so that we are there in a position to be able to make the decisions. And we're just not at that point yet, and that is where we are. And as a committee, when we do know what the national government is going to be doing in the special needs and with those local authorities that have already signed, signed up to the safety valve, when we know what that will look like, we'll be in a position to kind of make some choices for ourselves and see what's best for us to do, I suppose. But what we're, but we're just carrying on doing what we know we need to do. And that's kind of indicated by the already, by the, by the overspend or the higher deficit that we thought we might have. But also the early interventions, getting the places and improving inclusion in the mainstream, because those are the three things that we're going to have to do because that's the solution. There is only those solutions to it, regardless of what's going on in terms of contracts and capital budgets or revenue budgets.
Don't matter.
We're still live. Anybody else, any comments that they want to air publicly?
I don't think I have the word it, but I guess my question is how, and yeah, what, what impact? I mean, how, how do you foresee that overspend? Is that going to be the case going forwards, or is there a chance of bringing that down? And if so, what, the impact on services?
Do you mean the DSG?
No, no. Overall, like twenty three percent?
Yep.
Overspend is that, is, yeah, to your extent, is that possible to bring that down and all the impact on services, is my question.
Yeah, so we're doing everything we can. And it, you know, as I say, as I say in the report, and it's not an excuse, there's, you know, many authorities in America that sit in a position. And last year, we had a very similar situation as well. So this is a new, new situation particularly. We are working, I think the answer, if there, if there is an answer, you know, within the budget envelope of God, which is a particular one, it is, I think, for children's services nationally, is that we are working closely with families as early as possible. So that, you know, we all know that, and, and, you know, the student we can work with, families who are experiencing a large number of vulnerabilities, to address those as early as possible. We will prevent those needs rising and escalating, and therefore preserve preventive student stake. So that, I mean, that's the solution. That's the answer. It's easy said than done, of course. So we will be bringing forward, I did a really quick reference in the paper to work around early health intervention, family health, we use language. But basically, we mean two things. We mean firstly, the, both the quality of literacy into social, at their children's social care. So that social workers are able to prevent children being taken into care through really good quality social work, which is obviously anything that we're trying to do at the moment, and it's, and it's challenging. So that will be an element of our strategy going forward, what can we do to support social workers? And then the second bit will be, what can we do in things like family hubs, which are also the grant of year twelve in March? So what can we do around our family hubs work, children's centers, early years, maintained nursery schools, that sort of provision, so within communities, so that we can meet needs early. But obviously, that is, that is what we've been trying to do. So to answer the last answer, we're doing everything we can. We hope that the overspend this year will at least not go up. And we're doing everything we can to bring it down. And then next year, we'll have a conversation, I'm sure, about the budget and the savings targets and transformation work that we're going to have for council budget setting process.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that, what, so assuming it is, as I said, like a forecast for the financial year, what's the consequences for, say, come up with services? I guess there's not really a question for you to more, to try to do these sources, but.
Yes, technically finance, so the DSG is Brimfens, so, and there's what's called an over ride on that. So at the moment, at the end of this financial year, this, this financial year, twenty six is where it lives. Is that right? Twenty five, six. So. So at the end of this financial year, that's that protection, if you like, whereby whatever your deficit is in the DSG, kind of, it sits in a different place and we're just looking at the general fund, that still exists. At the moment, that kind of, the ability to do that is in place until 31st of March, If that isn't extended or something, or there isn't some kind of intervention at the national level from the government, at that point, there will be huge numbers of councils that vote us basically because there's such overspend in the DSG across the country. So there would, I'd be shocked if the new government is not thinking about how they're going to deal with that and what that looks like. Certainly Bristol hasn't got the revenue, the reserves that will balance that. And so that's the position that we will be in.
On the general fund.
Oh, on the general fund, yeah, yeah. Really, if you're overspend on it, you have to have the reserves. And Tony Dyke has been speaking quite a lot about that and that's, I mean, this is the biggest area of overspend, but it's not the only one. You know, there are other, there are other parts of the council that are also building up deficits. But the work that we've heard about is aimed to improve the outcome, to bring children, bring children back to Bristol and also lower the cost.
This is more of a statement really and nothing more personal to anybody that's working really hard to bring the deficit down, but if so many councils have such an overspend on DSG, obviously the amount of money that was allowed for it was not enough for the services that they wanted to require, which seems to be something that's common with the last government, sorry.
So unless anyone else has got any other comments on the finance report, so this is for us to, there's no decisions, this is for information, so I think there's no other one? Okay. Oh, gosh, not the lower four. Okay, so these are the recommendations. At the committee, note, general fund forecast out term revenue overspend of 25.2 million against the council approved budget for period three, 24, 25. Number two, forecast position of a net 10.8 million overspend in the DSG following the application of the DFG 24/5 safety valve combined with contributions from general fund totaling 16.9 million. The total, 49.9 million is carried forward in the DFG deficit reserve. And number three, forecast position of no variance on the capital programme revised budget 24, 25. I am happy to note those. Good. Okay, and this is the final item for today. This is the corporate risk management report and there's one error that's moved. But I think we're doing our item, yes?
Yeah, I am. And so, so yes, this report, I'll do it quickly. And I think to, so first of all, obviously this is a regular report that we bring every time and you will recognise the foreacts of it, which is a corporate foreact for risk reports. And I think there's just three things that I wanted to highlight to you. One was obviously the deficit of the debt deficit, which is why that is here, as we have just discussed. But the two others, one was around the safeguarding of vulnerable children, particularly just referencing the deaths of children in the city. Obviously in February, March, we had another death of different circumstances and we will bring, I referenced earlier on the national safeguarding children report, which we will be bringing, if we're engaging with the process of, we made that recommendation and that process is going on now. But we'll also bring a report next time, which is on the agenda around serious youth violence. And I was just noticing all sorts of comments around the police, it might be that, you know, we talk over here all separately to the police about how they, with us, all working personally together around serious youth violence, going forward in the city, which we could do. And then on unregistered provision, I just want to sort of recognise that that came to the audit committee, there was a discussion about the number of children we have in unregistered provision and again to say this is something which we absolutely don't accept and it's something which is very common across local authorities and something we continue to keep in close contact with, often about as well. So those were the points I was going to make. I don't think there's anything I have to say.
Yes, I don't have any questions on our hand this. So this is our kind of element of the big, the big risk register. Did I recorrect it that the DSG risk has kind of upped itself or gone to another level or something? Oh, right, maybe I misread it, maybe it's. All right, okay, yeah, okay, okay. So it's, so what the, what this paper is recommending is that the stuff that, what we were talking about, about this override at the end of 2026, that actually that gets, it kind of, it escalates because the closer we get, the more of a risk that is. So that's kind of, yeah.
Thank you. That is the, yeah, that's the escalation in the report.
Okay, and so there are no decisions for this. This is for an update for us, so that we've got an army on the areas that are corporately at risk across the council. So I need to ask you as council members if you are happy to note this report and then obviously we get, it will be updated the next time we need. Okay, so I think that's the end of our agenda items. I just want to take this opportunity really to congratulate the children. I know people that have taken their exams this summer. We've had A level results, B tech results and we've had GCSEs and Level One course results where they cross the city, group young people who have experienced all that Covid disruption that we were talking about earlier on. And Monday, the school's officially open again, although probably most children won't be in, on Monday, there'll be a day or two have been set, but I want to just wish every child and every family that are going back to school in September, particularly those who are in reception or in year seven or starting a new school, because that's always a massive thing for those, for those children to, to kind of adapt to. But the opportunities that hopefully they will be able to take advanced job during a school career will just, will be much greater than some of the years that we've seen recently for those young people. That's all. I'll say that. And our next meeting is on the 17th of October at five o'clock and it will be here again. So this, we've only got six weeks, about six weeks turnaround this time. Okay. Thank you very much everybody for your attention. Thank you to officers and eh.